Good morning. We're calling to order the budget, City Council Budget Workshop, July 26, 2022, and it's 5:00 PM, and we're going to get started. Sharon, can you take a roll, please?
Mayor.
President.
Vice Mayor Lindauer.
Here.
Councilmember Bryan.
Here.
Councilmember Poyas.
Here.
And Councilmember Conamos will be joining us soon.
All right, so I would like a consensus. Becky has ruled that as long as someone has an excused absence, which is a sickness, that they can join via phone and vote. But I want to get a consensus from the council that it's all right. Councilwoman Poyas?
I'm okay.
Okay.
I'm fine with it, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have to work this thing, but...
All right, for those of you online, our new Councilman Chris Conamos is still experiencing COVID symptoms, so we are going to call and he will be joining us via phone.
I don't know if I did this right or not, or...
Hillary knows that way.
I miss what step am I missing here?
Probably...
You need your down one area code number.
I think you need a one.
Yeah, I think you don't need a one.
I was talking to her the other day, telling her that she and Marley get together, they solve all the problems.
Hey, Chris.
Hello.
Yeah, Chris, can you hear us okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we just got consensus from the remaining of the council that we did get their approval to have you join and vote via telephone. Becky has told us that that is the way that we could do it. So you're on, and you will be a voting member tonight.
All right, thank you for accommodating me. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. How are you feeling?
Not very well.
Okay.
But thank you for asking.
All right, so now we're going to go on to the new business. So the purpose of this today is that we're going to review the 2022-2023 government and enterprise funds budgets, discussion of proposed millage, and important dates for trim. So Director Finance, Lori Irwin, will take over.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. We'll be going over the proposed budget that staff has been working diligently on for a while now. And this is our one time, our time that council and staff can openly discuss the budget. I have to say, I don't know if I'll be talking as much as our city manager, but, you know, hopefully enough to, we can get through this. As you, sorry, pardon me. Some of the key highlights that we have this year, I've compared to our current year, is that the new proposed budget at a 4.6389% millage rate would be $15,531,500, about a million dollars more, million two, from this current year. Now, you know, the CPI currently is at a 9.1% increase.
Almost triple.
Yes, yes.
More triple.
And it's included $1.2 million in capital expenditures, which you'll see those later on as we hit each department, with total personnel costs of a 4.6% increase. Now, looking at other cities, you know, this is right in line. I've seen cities, you know, putting through 5% and more. So we are, you know, right there. Our health insurance costs, insurance is going up. We're getting back at about a 20% increase. And you'll see our operational costs, a 6.85% increase, which again, with that CPI, it's the cost of goods that we're looking at.
And I don't want to interrupt you, but I do want to ask questions while you're there. All right, so when you're saying personnel costs, so some of those are actual numbers and some of those are increased percents. Is that correct? Am I looking at, so like, when you're looking at personnel costs, it's not 4.6, it, as the other one was 7.9, it's 4.6 increase?
Increase over the current budget, yes.
Okay, and then the 20% is an increase and the 6.85?
Correct.
But the capital expenditure is a raw number?
Yes.
All right, okay, that's it. Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right. And what we have here is just a comparison, because I know we all like to look at ourselves compared to the rest of the cities here in Belushi County. Now, currently, the rollback is at 4.4389%, which puts us here at number 12, actually no, a number 13 for all the cities. So there are 16 cities, and we would be, you know, in that lower percentile for the rollback rate. Now, if we went to the current rate that we're using currently of the 4.9356%, you can see that we're in that 12, number 12, in line. But if we use the proposed rate that we are considering, the 4.6389%, we should still be okay, you know, in that 12 to 13 row because of, if you can see there, Daytona Beach is at 5.01. You have Port Orange, which is 4.46, 4.5%. So we would be at a, you know, right there in line where we have been.
So we just slipped out of the bottom 25. I mean, we were out of the bottom 25 anyway, but we would, or maybe that we...
It depends. Like, right now, if you look at rollback, no, we are in the bottom 25. The current rate that we're doing right now, which is on the left-hand side, that puts us into that next category.
Okay.
So what city staff is proposing is a rate of 4.638%. Now, this is 2 mils, 0.2 mils over what the current rollback rate is. And the proposed rate adopted at the meeting tonight cannot increase at the tentative or final adoption meetings. So we can go down, but we just can't go up after it is set. Now, the impact of the proposed tax increase on the average parcel, what I did was take a look at your single-family homes that are here. We have 420 parcels. Now, that proposed rate would be an increase of, an annual increase of $58.94 to the single-family home.
A year?
A year.
Okay.
And looking at your condominium owners, we have 5,847 parcels. I mean, that's a large part of the city here. And that proposed tax increase would be an increase to them of $55 for the year, based on that rate.
Okay, Lori, can you answer this question? So, you know, last year, because of that 1.7 mil was paid off, and so we were telling people that they went down an average of 27%. So even with this increase, they are still not up to what they were paying previously. Is that a true statement?
That is a true statement.
Okay.
On the condominiums, is that an average of the...
Yes, that's an average parcel.
Home started and not...
Yes.
That's an average.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that. Now, this is some of the things that we were looking at. This is the first year that our taxable values have actually been at what they were at the highest in 2008 for the, you know, housing market.
Lori, you jumped a slide on you.
Oh, did it? Oh, sorry. Thank you. And so you can see here, if you look at the 2022, we're up around that. We're just under that $2 billion mark for taxable values. And, you know, it's the first time since 2007, so we've got 15 years it took us.
To get back to...
Yeah. You can see the bottom line, the green that you see, that is new construction. And you can see how it was flat for a large portion from 2009 until about 2020, where you can see it start going up. And that's where we started getting, you know, the Aruba, we've got Max Daytona, where we're getting these new condos that had come in, the new growth at the end, which actually put our taxable values, increased those.
Is the taxable value determined based on 2021, basically?
Yes, everything has a January, I believe.
Yeah, for this year, it'll be January 1, 2022, that will collect in November of '22 for fiscal year '22, '23.
These numbers are, as a 2021 number?
That is, no, that's the July, January 1, 2022, July 1 preliminary estimate from the property appraiser. They will finalize that number October, sometime in October.
Attempt to get at the 2022 values.
Correct. Ours has never changed dramatically. It might change 0.05% or something. Historically, it does not change much from the July estimate.
Thank you.
Now, these are a comparison of the levy taxes, taxes over the years. And again, as you can see, what we're proposing for 2022 is comparable to what was being, what actually our taxpayers paid in 2008, when property values were up back then.
And just, I'm going to add, for the record, the 2007 number that looks like it spiked in '08, well, in '07 is the year the state came in and said, "We are going to roll back your property taxes for you." And every city had to reduce between 3% and 9%. I don't know what percentage we got reduced that year. I believe it was either 5% or 7%. You were 3, 5, 7, or 9. That's why it looks funny like it was such a large spike, but it was, because it was reduced that year by the state.
And also, actually, and we were looking in this, if we go back to this slide here on the new construction, you can see in the 2000 to 2008, we had a lot of new construction come in, increased that, the levy taxes that...
What does levy taxes already?
That is the amount that, based on the millage that you're taking, that you're, for the year, for your taxable values, that is what you are getting in funding.
Okay.
Simple way, billed versus collected. Levied is what we build.
Here, what we're comparing is we're looking back at the rollback rate versus our final millage rate that is approved, adopted. And as you can see, in, actually, we were looking at in the last 10 years, six of the years were actually, I believe, we actually went to rollback rate. Some of the things that are still outstanding that we're waiting on is every year, the Office of Economic and Demographic Research, they actually put out revenue estimates for the state. And every year, we're always waiting on communications tax. It's supposed to be here July 2022. Well, we're at the end of the month, and so we're still waiting on. Right now, we're approximating about $220,000. So, but we're still waiting on that. And we're still waiting on our renewal quotes on our property and casualty insurance. That renews in October 1, so...
Is that 366, last year's number?
Yes.
Do we have any indication of how much that might go up?
No, and I actually spoke with them today, and they're looking into things, they say usually between 30 to 45 days prior. I'm being told that the liability is, should be coming in basically where it is now, but the property is where they're seeing because of property values and the cost of material, that that's where the increase is going to be.
Is, are we getting more than one bid, or...
There's basically only two companies that we can deal with right now, and that I know of, which is Florida League of Cities and Preferred Government Insurance Trust.
And which one do we currently have?
Preferred Government Insurance Trust. So, and they do go to both of them, so...
We're self-insured for most of the property, right?
Excuse me?
We're self-insured for most of the property, right?
Well, up to a point, I believe.
Yeah, we're insured, we're self-insured just on medical. We carry full coverage based on values, which is part of one of the discussions we're having. You know, we say this building is worth X dollars, and they're now saying, "Well, we may have to reassess those values. That's why the property issues are," you know, because replacement costs right now are a huge question mark. And how we value that in a lot of the policies, if you put a low number, they won't cover your, or will only cover you to that value, not what it truly is costing to replace it. So they're looking at, we're looking at probably after October 1, where they will send a company out to revalue everything based on current market situations. I don't know if that answered your question?
Yeah. I knew we were self-insured. I just didn't know exactly what. I was under the impression it was for buildings as well, but it's not.
Can you go back to that other screen? I'm sorry. Go back, what's great? This one? Did you talk about this screen at all?
Now, what we're doing is getting into actually each department. I'm just bringing out highlights of any kind of changes that they're having. You can see here, the Legislative Department actually is having a total decrease of $7,700 in their budget.
And what is the board recognition events? What falls into that?
They used to, they would do recognition, whether it's dinners or...
Was this a CNE board for...
When we had the boards, we used to do a big thing, and we had budgeted for it, but it, we only have the Planning and Soning Board. Yeah, it was the December one. I think you were here for the first, or the last year of it. But we don't do it anymore because we only have the one board.
So that's decreased it by 4,500?
Right. And then there, the general insurance, just because it's being moved to other account departments. And then there's a small increase in operating supplies, nothing there.
That's it. Okay.
Sorry about that. For the Executive Department, there's a total increase of $8,200 or 1.29%. In personnel expenses, you've got about $6,300 in increases, and some training expenses of $1,000, and travel for $3,600. This includes like your city manager, your city clerk, executive assistants. But in contract services, they actually decreased $2,800. It was just a program that was no longer used.
Lori, our travel, so some of us are going to the Florida League of Cities in August, and so our travel and everything, does this fall into here, or is that a different?
Counselors are the legislative.
Okay.
If it's here, the travel would be like Kurtz and Sherry's, or anything that they're The Finance Department had a total decrease of $62,400, a 10% decrease. This was mainly in professional, or personnel expenses because of the change in employees, the city manager moving up. And then there was a decrease in professional service, actuary services. We actually had gotten new pricing for that, which was lower than what we had previously. And then there was a decrease in our audit services. It was just what we were budgeting of $7,700. And travel expenses, because there were different conferences and things that we were hoping to go to last year, and they're not having them this next year, so... And Legal Department, it increased $5,500. This was because of the election expenses, some legal advertising. There was some decreasing in ordinance printing, minor things, but... Your other government services, which takes account your city hall IT infrastructure, and also our sign grants. In this account, it was increased $86,500. Now, there was an increase in the computing because of our ERP system. We're going to a web hosting cloud system. So you'll see that here and also in our enterprise system. So that really takes that increase from them. And the Code Enforcement Board, they increased this year $6,000 for the magistrate. And then we have the increase in sign grants of $48,700.
So that Code Enforcement Board, we've had a special magistrate, I believe. This is the third year. Did his fee increase? Is that what the $6,000 is for?
From what I know, it's, it's taking into account that. I don't know if his contract change, I'm, if anyone knows.
His contract rate, I don't believe, has changed, but I think it's some of the advertising, and we're doing more. And so...
Doing more advertising.
Stuart, if you know the full answer on that, Stuart?
City Manager is correct. Advertising and recording fees have gone up because of more business at the special magistrate's office.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I don't understand advertising for code enforcement. Can you explain that to me a little bit better? What do we advertise in the way of code enforcement?
So the public hearings have to be advertised. There's, there's letters that have to go out. There's things that have to be reported. Because of a larger caseload, all those things have to be taken into account and anticipated before in the future.
So was it exceptionally low during COVID that we didn't have a lot? Because all of those fees seems like they'd stay relatively the same. So was it because we had, we put a halt on a lot of stuff during COVID, and now we're back to business as usual?
That is definitely the case, correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Now, we're looking at the public safety, and the public safety admin, the total, they had a total decrease of $32,800 in their budget. The decrease is, they had $46,800 in personnel expenses due to retirement next year.
Okay, so, so the higher paid public safety are leaving, and the new ones we're bringing in are in a lower rate. So that's, even though we gave that bump.
Well, keep in mind, Mayor, this is the admin portion of the...
Admin, okay.
It won't be that on the next slide.
Oh, okay, okay.
Your public safety CID, patrol, your rescue, yes. This is where there is an 8.77% increase, which is in your personnel expenses. There's $299,000. This has to do with when you go back, what, about a year ago, April, when we needed to hire more people and give incentives and bring them in, and for, this is to triple train them. As you can see, there's an increase in training also there for that, because we want our public safety officers triple trained.
So this would be a reflection of the increase in pay and the take-home cars and all of those things, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And we voted for that.
Yes. And then there's an increase in capital expenditures, you can see here, of $129,500 for a new drone, license plate reader, a CBA mask, and a ZOALife PAC monitor.
What is a ZOALife PAC monitor, Captain?
I don't know what that is. Didn't explain.
And is there only one in the ZOALife PAC monitor?
We have one. Generally, we keep two monitors, and those are cardiac monitors. One of paramedics use to read cardiac rhythms and apply defibrillation. And the one that we have that we're replacing is far out of date. So we're coming up with one that will be compatible with the new RMS system that the county's implementing.
Okay, great, thank you.
Public Safety Fleet Department increased by 6.8%. Again, this is in personnel expenses just, and there was increases in repairs and maintenance, operating supplies. But they did have a decrease in some fuel tank cleaning that they just moved to a different department. It's just normal increase. Building and Codes, they had a total decrease of $47,200, so 7.33% decrease. Now, they had a decrease in personnel expenses only due to moving the director actually out of Building and Codes and putting him into the Public Works admin department. It's just moving one from one department to the other. The previous director was chief building inspector, so just move people around. Then you can see there's just basic gas, oil expenses, office supplies that are increasing, increase in operating supplies, and their capital expenditures of $65,000 just to replace one vehicle and then to get a code enforcement vehicle.
So this is a reflection of everything we're seeing everywhere, whether you go to the grocery store, wherever you're going.
Correct, just increased cost of everything, 9.1% CPI.
Okay.
Physical environment, this is just our solid waste, garbage and recycling. And there's an actual, we're looking at a 9.64% increase in that. Now, that does get passed along to our residents, and that is just part of the contract that we have.
Do we know for sure that it's going to be the 9.64?
No, we don't.
No, we don't, but that is the CPI. And if, as I had mentioned in a previous meeting, Waste Pro has asked for a larger increase. They've been negotiating with other cities. And depending on what time we get out of here tonight, they're doing a presentation at another city. I've spoken with that manager, and he's invited me to come sit in at that and hear their presentation of what they're asking for and why.
Are they planning on doing the same with us?
They, they are, but we're, we're such a small entity compared to the others. Some of them, what they bill us a year is what they bill these other cities a month. So they're focusing on the big fish, so to speak. But I, if we, we get out of here in time tonight, I'm going to go sit in on that, and I'll hear what they're asking for. But the CPI, which they have requested, and they are allowed to get by contract, would be the 9.64%.
And there's only really two players in that market, correct?
Locally, but there's, there's some that may, it's an ever-evolving market. They try and steal contracts every chance they can. But really, there's about three in this area, Orlando Waste, Republic, Waste Pro, and...
FCC.
And FCC is, yeah. Orlando Waste and FCC are ones trying to get into the market here and steal from the other two.
All right, but you said in the last meeting or previous meeting, we were not obligated to grant any increase.
No, they have a CPI component in the contract. They're asking for above and beyond.
Okay.
So as you see, the CPI was 9.6, whatever that went. And they were asking for around 30% at other cities. By contract, they have a right to ask. They don't have a right to get it automatically. They have a right to ask council for an adjustment to the contract.
Above the CPI.
Correct.
But they are...
They are, yes.
You get the CPI.
Yes.
And we can't deny that.
No. We actually have two components. It's a CPI and a fuel component that are automatic.
Public Works Administration, this is where you'll see the increase of $219,600. This is where the increase in personnel is from moving your director over from the Building and Codes Department. And then there's an increase in training. And this year, they have a stormwater five-year permit that needs to be taken care of, and replacement of a vehicle number 52. Now, Public Works, the building maintenance, this had a total increase of $374,000. This was mainly doing, due to capital expenditures. This was mainly due to capital expenditures. There was an increase in personnel of fifty-nine thousand dollars, but that's just from moving one employee from the streets department into the building maintenance department. A lot of this is just moving personnel. And they had an increase in contract services of fifty-six hundred dollars. Now, the capital expenditures, they have the balcony repairs for here and the community center there. We're having floors replaced in city hall and the spalling repairs in city hall along with public safety, their compound fence extension. And then we have the citywide camera system that is going to be replaced.
Is that what the one that's like at the pickleball courts and the tennis courts?
All over the city that everybody watches, yes. Public Works Streets Department, they had a small increase of one and a half percent, mainly in their personnel expenses of thirty thousand dollars. They have some training, repairs and maintenance. They're getting, you know, it's usually the eighteen thousand street signs, light pole fixtures, and those replace, we replace every annually. And their capital expenditures, actually, they had a decrease this year. So it's coming here. Benefit term payout, this is for any of our retirees, anybody that's retiring, we put it in here. And our decrease in the retirement payouts this year is a decrease of twenty percent. So this takes care of people that are retiring this year.
How many employees do we have left in the drop?
Three.
Okay, I was going to say, who are going this next year, right?
We have Stefan, the director, in October. No, he's not a director.
In drop.
And we only have two. Sergeant Rottmacher and.
Officer Rooney.
Officer Sean Ernie.
And they're not required to retire this year, although I expect both will. The legislature changed the drop for police officers to eight years.
Okay, but you still anticipate that they'll both leave?
I do anticipate they'll both go.
And will those, well, Rooney's not, so you'll have another opening for a sergeant at one time?
Yes.
Okay.
Parks and Recs, they had a total increase of sixty-seven thousand two hundred or thirteen point seven percent. This increase was a small increase in personnel expenses, and they had an increase in repairs and maintenance. Largest one is in their other category, which is for a new Christmas tree they said they needed. And operating supplies, just they had capital expenditures for Miguelroy Fence Replacement and then out here for the Veterans Memorial Park, the addition of the Space Force flag is included in that.
Is the Christmas tree, the one down there by the pavilion or this one out back? Does anyone know?
I thought it was this one.
This one out back here?
Yes.
Eleven thousand.
Yeah.
It's a big tree.
Community Center, total increase of fourteen percent. They have an increase in personnel expenses of thirty-five thousand, training, travel. And then in this, what we did was we moved the C and E proceeds from what was in another, where the IT was, we put it into the community center. So it's just a moving one account to another place. It makes sense to be there with the community center.
That seems high, that thirty-five thousand for community center can, are we adding anyone else or just raises?
No, we actually reclassified two positions up a pay grade, the custodial, they're more than custodians. They do so much with the events that in looking at what level work they were doing, we felt that they should actually be up a pay grade when comparing them to the requirements of other positions in the city. For a lot of what they do, they're the face of the city for our special events and especially the rentals. So they were just basically a custodial person, but they're.
You know, and I can attest to that. I've been to some of the events that take place at night, that they're, you know, they're for four or five hours setting up. Okay.
Our contingency is the same as, you know, previous budget. This is just the proceeds that are, for anything that we don't see out there. This could be the increase in the general insurance, anything. It could be possibly the ladder for the fire truck, any of those contingency things that we don't account for. Economic Development, there's a decrease in their budget of eighty thousand dollars. This year, there's no land purchase incentive. That was already paid out. We're not doing that. So what is there is a hundred thousand dollars for lease subsidy grants.
Okay.
The Enterprise Fund, the sewer fund, they have an increased budget of two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. They're having an increase in professional services, engineering of forty-eight thousand dollars and contract services of another eighteen thousand five hundred. This is where that web hosting, our ERP system actually takes into account all the utility billing. So they need to, you know, take care of a portion of that. So that's what that is. In utility charges, there's an increase of, you know, sixty-three hundred dollars, increase in sewer services of thirty-five thousand dollars and what we call other services of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. What this does is this is an internal service charge. It's HR assets, operations, anything that the city does for the sewer fund, the Enterprise Fund, a portion of that is put towards the sewer fund. So that is what that is for. And then there's an increase in just operating supplies, just normal things. And this is interesting, just things in the greaser and filters to increase up to fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars to show the increase in goods out there. Their contingency went up a little bit, forty-seven thousand, but they do have a decrease in personnel expenses of thirty-three thousand dollars. Again, this was due to movement of people and people leaving and new employees coming in, lower, lower wages. And there's a decrease in repairs and maintenance of thirty-eight thousand from last year. Now, some of the important dates that we need to remember are in August. It comes up being August 24th this year. The property appraiser sends out the notice of proposed property tax to all property owners so that they'll get that once we, you know, let them know, which we have to do that next week. Then September 12th, it's a Monday, that'll be our first public hearing on the tentative budget, and it'll be adopted, but that, remember, is on a Monday, not our normal Tuesday.
That's still at 6:00 PM, though.
Yes, correct, 6:00 o'clock.
What is it, the 7:00 PM?
That will be the first one in November. We also, that's the one we had to move to Wednesday because election is Tuesday, so.
And then September 22nd, 27th will be the final public hearing where the final millage rate is, and budget is adopted. That's a regular meeting time. Any questions? I know we had questions during, so.
So Laura, explain to me one time too, you know, you and I, and I know you had this conversation with some of the other council people, and explain to me one more time about taking, it was around eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars out of reserves, they're only taking half of that. Can you go over that with me one more time? If we only take half that amount, how much millage rate would go up?
Well, and that's where this proposed millage rate is coming from. We could go to the rollback rate. And what would end up happening is we would end up having to take about eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars out of our reserves. And that can be done. But again, our reserves are invested and we have them coming out, they're laddered. So, you know, we just have to rework, you know, cash flows and everything. But by doing that two mils, you're basically cutting that in half. And what we're doing is the increase in our personnel and most of our operating costs, which were about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that you could, you know, is in that point two mils.
So if we.
Rather than taking that out of.
And that's the only way that we could go to rollback, would it be to take out that eight hundred and ninety thousand?
Correct.
Or we could take out half of that, around four hundred or five hundred thousand, and then what would be the new?
That is where this proposed budget is coming from.
Okay, all right. So in order to get to what you had told us about, we need to take out how much out of reserves?
You're taking out about four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so those are only two options.
Well.
We can always cut the budget. That's the other thing. So, I mean, we can always reduce expenses. There's things like, we could say, well, you saw that we're buying some vehicles and things like that, we could say we could postpone that for a year. So there's many different options and ways to go about that. What we as staff were looking at was our costs are going up.
Mm-hmm.
And we saw the CPI is nine percent. We were kind of proposing numbers, looking at what we would need if we were at rollback. Speaking in round numbers, we're talking, it would have been, to do everything in the budget, it would have been about nine hundred thousand dollars from reserves. But I want to keep, want you to keep in mind that we have one point one five million in contingency that if nothing major pops up during the year, we're actually, would offset that fund balance usage. And that's kind of how we have budgeted for a very long time. Last year, we budgeted to use five hundred and thirty-eight thousand of fund balance. Time will tell what we actually used of that, but it's a, that trade-off of, do we want to do everything that staff is requesting? You know, for example, we have in there a front-end loader, backhoe combination, and a new one is about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Well.
Could that wait a year? But as part of where we're going and trying to avoid, what I want to avoid and have tried as finance director and a city manager now, try to avoid is coming back to council and going, it's a year where we need to go from, you know, rollback is four point four, but I need you to go to, you know, five point five mils because of X, Y, and Z have happened. And if we are funding this a little bit, it's basically the cost of the CPI. You know, our costs go up, our employees are getting raises, it's helping to cover that increased cost.
Laura, can you go back to that slide that tells us that a residence would go, was it 58 and a condo 55? Can you go back to that slide for me, please?
I sure can.
Okay, so if we do everything that we've talked about, if we accept every one of the department's budgets, and we take out around four hundred thousand out of our reserves, and we don't really need to take it out of the one we've invested, you have some cash.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so we have some cash fest, so we can do all the value added that our residents like and have always told us that they want. So we can do that, and the single family would go up fifty, around fifty-eight dollars a year, and a condo would go up about 55, and we could do all of that?
Correct.
So what other questions do we have?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. Does the budget take into account, or is it too early to take it into account, the possible six hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars that we'll get from the treasuries? Thirty million at three percent?
Well, it takes into account some of it. I think there's like two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars built in there, but you have to remember, it's all laddered.
Oh, I understand that.
Some of it is longer to, some of it actually matures this current fiscal year, and then some will mature next year. And then there's actually some into the next budget year. Yes.
Because if we ladder it and we're at one and two years, you're looking at three percent right now. Three percent of thirty thousand, or thirty million is nine hundred thousand, which is a nice piece of change, thanks to you and Kurt for getting that in the works.
Is it nine hundred thousand?
Well, it's, we've got, what, twenty thousand invested right now, so if you look at that, it's about like six.
Twenty million.
Twenty million.
If you get three, three percent on that work, six hundred thousand a year, as opposed to the.
Average is right now to be two, three, eight, so two and a half percent, if you want to say.
And the other, the other comment I would make is I'm involved in Treasury Inflation Protected Securities, and the latest component of I-bonds, which is a treasury issue, the component for the inflation part was nine point six two, which is a number that's been thrown around, but it's not a fictitious number. This is a number that the government said, this is what inflation is, and we're going to pay the people who own I-bonds, nine point six two percent. So when you look at the four point five that's proposed, or approximately four point five percent, it's only half of the current government inflation number. So I think that's something that we want to keep in mind, that we're not even using inflation as an excuse. We're only going halfway with the official inflation number, so.
Correct.
Any other comment? Councilman Bryan, any other comment?
Yeah, this is related to what Mel was just saying. I'm trying to find it here. It seemed like there was a number that was a lot less than six hundred thousand, it was more like two, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Like two hundred and thirty-three thousand built into this current budget. That is actually what matures in that current fiscal year. I think it's another, I want, we wanted to play it safe because we'll be reinvesting.
Yeah.
So that would be interest that we.
It still seems like.
Two hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Unless we have a really heavy two-year, you know, investment in two years, because everything but two years is basically mature next fiscal year.
Some this year, some next year. It's a timing issue, but.
But once it matured this year, we're going to be reinvesting right?
Correct, yes.
So I just suggest that maybe you take a look at that as whether that might be a little low. We scrub the numbers, but.
How many will mature in 2022?
2022.
If you did three.
Right now, because we've got one, three, six. Three months, that'll do this current fiscal year. There are.
Even a six-month one.
Nine months and a year. So there's four that'll, that will mature.
The nine-month won't, will it? What month did we do it?
It'll be next, it'll be next fiscal year.
Next fiscal year.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
I think, Madam Mayor, I think one thing that we need to point out, too, is that we only approved going a hundred percent just at the last meeting or the meeting before that. So they haven't been able to fully utilize the reserves that we have for investment because they were restricted to fifteen million, right? Because of the fifty percent.
Previously, yes.
So now they can go to the thirties. So hopefully.
Which they have done.
In the next year, next few years, we will be getting a considerable amount of revenue from the.
Okay, Councilman Conamos, do you have any questions or concerns or anything you'd like to talk about?
I do not, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Politis.
Yes, I took notes. I paid attention.
I could tell. I knew you'd have a lot.
I applaud you both for having Kurt, the chief financial officer, excuse me, you're the chief financial officer, he's the chief executive officer. And I've seen where you have your expenses and you anticipate the increase in expenses as a result of not only inflation, just how life is, and also how it goes with regards to personnel. And of course, each department reports to you about anticipated capital expenditures. We need a new front-end loader, we need a new squad car, we need a new code enforcement vehicle. You've taken our monies that sat still and through the hints of council people and your own presentation, we've invested it so that way it's doing something while it's sitting. And you kind of have a rough guesstimate of the anticipated future income with all that. We always have to think about the residents, and, you know, you can't jam them up too much, a lot of them on a fixed income. So I applaud you for trying to make sure that that millage rate is kind of going to be in a safe and comfortable zone, especially if Larry Bartlet has, comes out with higher assessed values, which we all anticipate will occur. So their taxes are probably going to go up a little bit, but not a lot. And so it'll be somewhat comfortable. it'll be somewhat comfortable. With the fact that we have a lot of reserves, and I know it's kind of a really white elephant, what do you, where are we going? I mean, what do you predict? Do you predict that we'll always be able to maintain a low milage rate to make it somewhat easy on our, our residents? Do you worry about storms? Do we know of any major infrastructure that may either require issuance of the bond or using our cash, sort of like building this place? So you guys know more than I do, I was just curious. You're very conservative, I applaud you for that, so I'm not complaining, I'm asking a question.
No, and, and that is out there, but we actually planned for that in advance. I mean, there's things in here, if you look at your sewer budget, there's, you know, two and a half million dollars in there to do any kind of repairs that might be there. And, you know, with all of the departments, we're actually together and we tried to put together, you know, look at the, the future to see what it is the needs of the, you know, city and the residents. Now, say, you know, is, is, is it going to, in tax rates increase, you know, forever? Well, I mean, as long as our values go up, but again, we're limited where we are. I know Kurt's seeming to want to say something, so.
No, there's, there is one thing that we have not talked about. I think I've discussed it a little bit with the mayor, but all of our surrounding cities in the county are proposing dramatic increases in public safety pay. You know, we did that a year and a half ago and put us at the top of the starting pay, and I believe we are going to be this October already three dollars an hour behind the next highest for the, one of the higher paid. So we've definitely already fallen back down to, I, I think, number seven in the pay. I'm, I'm not saying it's, it's something we need to do today, but that market, you know, you heard that we have two possible retirements this year, senior officers that we'll be hiring, and when we're trying to promote the city in hiring
We lose three?
I'm sorry?
And we lost, we're going to lose three.
We have lost two, possibly a third, and I believe Captain Fowler is itching to speak as well.
We'll actually lose four that we know of in the next fiscal year, in addition to the director, the sergeant, and the senior officer that I spoke of that are all going to be retiring. We have a paramedic firefighter who's going to be leaving, she's getting married and moving out of state.
That's what I thought.
Those are the ones that we know about.
Okay, so, and we'll talk about it another time, but if we decided to go up to two fifty or even to the rate, and it's in October, and we're already in the next fiscal year, where would we get that money from to be able
So, part of it is that contingency that we have in, in the budget, part of it could be from fund balance, and, and this is why we do an annual budget rather than a multi-year budget, is to be able to react, you know, government reacts slowly to the marketplace, and this is just one of those things that we as staff are looking at, the current market of what, what may hit us, and we have some contingencies in there for that, but it's why we have budget amendments as well. So I don't know if that kind of answered the question.
Good question, Councilman Politis, did that answer your question?
Well, I have a pretty good idea. I was just, like I said, I know you guys do a great job of, of making sure there aren't extravagant requests and, and that things stay within control, but as we know, everything will continue to increase in expense. And of course, with that commensurate, you want there to be somewhat of an increase in revenue, but our revenue source is residents and the taxes we collect, but you got to make sure you don't gouge them too much because of the majority or a lot of people are on a fixed income, so you kind of play with that milage and assessed value. Is there enough of a cushion that this four point six that you propose is, makes you feel comfortable, that we're not going to have that substantial of an increase in the tax bill for the residents, but at the same time, we'll have enough revenue to fund the budget?
Yes.
And that's why you're proposing that? That's why it's a little higher than the rollback, but a little bit lower than where we currently are, yeah.
And as we showed earlier, where you saw that big line, you know, for the taxes levy, that's what we're trying to get away from, so that as we do it, we can level it out over time.
And what we, just, okay, where do we start with that number? And we looked at, okay, what is the CPI? It was nine point one, and we kind of chose, well, what does half do for us? And that's where the four point five one percent is kind of where we fell, and then looking at the numbers, it's two tenths of a mil. It, it's not, as you see on this slide, it's not a huge, we understand there's an impact. Sewer rates will be going up, garbage rates are going up, so there, there are impacts to our citizens, we fully understand that, but we're trying to avoid going, you know, this year, we're still trying to fully fund everything that is being requested, but yet being, trying to approach it reasonably without a huge impact, I guess is the
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One of the things you mentioned, Kurt, we could put off purchasing things, but the negative with that is inflation, and it's going to cost a lot more when we, when we eventually get it, so.
And unfortunately, a lot of, you saw a lot of vehicles up there. We're finding that last year, a lot of the vehicles that we tried to order, like as soon as the council adopted the budget, that second meeting in September, we're not sure we're going to get all those this year. They may actually hit this budget year, so the ones we're ordering this year may not, we may not get those till the following budget year. That's just the way with a lot of stuff right now, you know, we have to have it budgeted before we can commit to it, so.
And I know we intensified, we're going to have about forty-five minutes next time. Let's start a little bit earlier, but, so, you know, again, looking at, again, my concern is for the residents, and am I looking at it correctly, either one of these, whether in a single-family home or condominium, you're going to be paying basically five dollars more a month for all the services that we have that we continue, okay. All right, so what do you need from us now? Do you need a motion to, or?
No, nothing at this meeting. At the next meeting, you will adopt a proposed milage rate at the, this is just a workshop, we can't vote here, but we have the resolution at the regular agenda meeting.
Okay, so in the two minutes that we have left, any other comments or questions?
Could you explain what's in, in terms of the general fund, functional summary, the first page, what this line item, internal forest and debt proceeds involves? Of about close to a million dollars. It's the second from the bottom.
What page number is that?
First page.
First page, page one, okay, and is it on the top?
Yeah, it's the top, the second line item from the bottom of the revenue.
Do you have your budget with you?
No, I have this
Okay. For those that have their budget, it's page, if you look at page three, that is the internal transfer that the Finance Director was talking about from sewer to general fund, where we charge overhead. For example, Stuart Cruz is in charge of the sewer department. Well, all of his wages are paid out of general fund, so we have an administrative charge. The folks in finance that handle all the utility billing and everything, they're paid out of general fund, so we charge that to the sewer fund. So it's in, basically an administrative fee based on percentages of salary and some overhead costs that we transfer to the general fund to cover those costs of where they're being paid from.
And the debt pricing part of it? That's the internal service portion.
Yeah, and that would be where, if we had taken out debt, or we're planning to take out debt, where those proceeds would be budgeted, we're not doing that, but that's what the line item is broken down as.
I assume that we're still paying back ourselves for the, we're handing to ourselves for this
Yes, yes.
It's in the contingency amount, yes.
Where is that?
In the contingency.
Contingency, okay.
Okay, if there's no other questions, everyone's okay. All right, we're going to end this section of our budget work